We have the provincial department of agriculture amongst our midst. Oh, we also have the mayor that he indicated that she has sent councillor Idumel Marive. Also allow me to acknowledge the presence of Josi Tseko Manguruani. I understand that. Josi does not stand up and greet you and the men greet the Josi. Now I will hand over to the acting mayor, councillor Idumel Marive, to welcome us in the town.
Thank you very much, program director. Members of the portfolio committee responsible for agriculture, land reform and rural development. The traditional leadership led by the parliament chief Josi Manguruani. Officials from the department, Baxbar Naputuwa Ta'oum. And the other stakeholders, strategic stakeholders. The program director in terms of the protocol that he would like, the parliament chief.
I would like to be with you, especially with Mr Manguruani, that if we can help the parliament chief to ascend to the table in front.
Oh, it's not allowed, okay. Okay, no, it's fine. Once more, let me take this opportune moment to welcome the portfolio committee members. And also to have identified Ta'oum in order to have an engagement with those more so with that involvement. As we celebrate Mandela month, I can only add that in the middle of the way, to deal with issues still among issues of security. On behalf of Kritata Mlokalin's parliament here, I'm a chairman of the committee, but the municipality we love, we'd like to welcome the honourable members and the citizens.
And we also have the responsibility to take part.
Thank you so much Tata, without wasting time, thank you for welcoming us. I will do a brief overview of the bill. And try to unpack why we are here as parliament. We are here in Ta'oum to have public hearings on the bill that is the preservation and development of agricultural land bill. This bill was introduced in parliament by the Department of Agriculture and Land Reform and Rural Development. And was further referred to the portfolio committee of agricultural land reform and rural development on the 2nd of February 2021. This bill seeks to promote the preservation and sustainable development of agricultural land in the country. Currently, the subdivision and use of agricultural land is controlled through the Act of 1970. Which inhabits subdivision of agricultural land without the consent of the Minister of Agriculture and Land Reform. However, this subdivision Act is an old Act of 1970 that is administered by the national department only. And such does not conform to the constitutional requirements of cooperative governments where national, provincial and local spheres of government have a role to play. Further, it is also applicable to privately owned land which limits the Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development from protecting and controlling the loss of high value agricultural land. Preservation and development of agricultural land bill brings the committee here today. We seek to replace and address the shortcomings of Sala in order to curb the loss of the agricultural land in the country. And to further protect high value agricultural land from further loss and degrading from non-agricultural use by demarcating protected agricultural areas. The proposed bill intends to harmonize the need for the use of agricultural land. For agricultural purposes and the need for non-agricultural use such as land for a human settlement and urban development and in line, as I've said earlier, in line with the special planning. Central to the implementation of Preservation and Development of Agricultural Land Bill. Once it's signed into law. Is cooperative governments, hence where all spheres of government will have a role to play and provinces are expected to develop provincial agricultural sector plans. The objective of this hearing. Is to engage directly with you as stakeholders. Stakeholders from different communities or affiliation. So that we can hear your views and your inputs on the bill. The proposition of you that you have on the bill will be appreciated. Where you have concerns with certain aspects or clause of the bill, we will need you to highlight those specific areas whilst while also making proposals on how we can address your concern as the portfolio when it comes when it comes to processing of the plan. As I've indicated earlier that we are different stakeholders here in this meeting. As the portfolio committee of agricultural land reform and rural development. We will also like to gain an understanding and state of readiness of other spheres of government in terms of capacity and resource availability in respect of responsibility envisaged in the bill. We will also like to gain an understanding on the possible duplication or conflict with existing legislation if there's any. Now the question that everybody has or most of you have in this room is what will happen next after the public hearing? The committee, this is the third public hearing from different provinces. We intend to go to all nine provinces having such same meetings. At the conclusion of all these public hearings from all provinces. The committee will take all the inputs made on the bill, written submission and oral submissions. We will take all of them, process them. The Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development which is represented here will be expected to respond to all the inputs and submissions that have been made on the bill. As the committee, we take all the inputs, submit a report on the bill to the national assembly of parliament. From the national assembly, we will submit the bill to the second house which is the national council of provinces. The national council of provinces will also embark on its own process of consultation on the bill. Thereafter, all both both houses after they concluded their process, then it will be sent to the president for the signing into law. That is the process that we are embarking on as parliament and stakeholders. Before we engage stakeholders, I would like to invite the department to give us a brief summary of the bill. And I'm told that this will be done by Ms Lydia Bosaha? Ms Lydia Bosaha is the Director of Land Use and Soil Management in the province. Oh, sorry, at national? Can Ms Lydia come to the front? I'm told you will use that mic.
Thank you, Chairperson, Ms Truete. Members of the Parliament and Portfolio Committee of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development. Josi Manguruani, Bari Kamuka Ba'Ta'oum and councillor from Ta'oum, good morning. As they indicated, I'm Lydia Bosoga, I'm responsible for the bill in terms of the technical input. In summary, this bill as they already indicated is if approved is gonna replace the subdivision of agricultural land act. If it was not because of Sala, we could have lost a lot of agricultural land in the country. So Sala has its own gaps but now the Preservation and Development of Agricultural Land Bill is going to address those gaps. The mechanisms that the Preservation and Development are bringing to this committee is the following. The first one is in relation to information, land evaluation where all available arable land, both cropping and livestock will be evaluated in the same way in all spheres of government. So the importance of this evaluation is that everybody else will be able to know the potential, the capability and the suitability of the land that they are farming with. Currently, we're experiencing challenges where people are farming with crop which are not suitable to the soil and that result in less productivity. Another mechanism that this bill is bringing is that there will be agricultural sector plans. These sector plans are going to assist the department such that there will be resources allocated for utilization of available arable land in the country. There will also be opportunity for people to learn more and be empowered around the use of land from the science of utilizing land. The other mechanism that Pidalp is bringing is also protected agricultural areas. We are currently experiencing challenges of competing land use where agricultural land is lost for other purposes. So in short, this is going to assist in terms of ensuring that that land which is high value agricultural land is preserved for purposes of agriculture and food security. Lastly, we also experience challenges where when you are farming next door, then there will be other activities that are disturbing the ecosystem. For instance, if you have a wetland running, somebody farming, utilizing that wetland for grazing or water the crops. So if that portion of land is blocked or sealed because of other activities which are not related to agriculture? That impact on the availability of agricultural ecosystem running of that area but also affect the production of the neighboring farm? So all this that I mentioned is more of the technical input that are bringing about by Pidalp to address the shortcomings of Sala. Lastly, I'll just mention the governance issues that are affected by Pidalp which are part of the governance is that there will be various committees that are assisting in terms of decision making. So this will ensure that we are all utilizing agricultural land in a balanced approach. In short, program director, this is what the bill is all about in terms of governance and also technical mechanisms that are brought to replace the subdivision of agricultural land act. Hi, thank you.
Thank you Mama Bosaha. Without wasting any time, we'll immediately get into the process. The process of how we're going to proceed with the oral submissions from the relevant stakeholders. In my culture, without suppressing anyone's culture, but as an African child, a chief or a Josi cannot raise a hand and speak first or in between people. Therefore, I will humbly ask the Josi or the Joshas in the house to speak last because ordinary people like some of us, the commoners, cannot speak after the chief has spoken. Can we please observe that part, I humbly request that. Therefore, the chiefs or the chief that is present in this meeting, I will request that they speak last. Now, we will we will take ten hands and come and make their submission and we take the others later. When you come, you state your name, your forum or who you represent so that we take note of who are we talking to, you make your presentation or your submission. Therefore, that's how we're gonna work today. Those that you do not honestly have to make a lengthy thing only if you say I support the amendment of the bill or I don't support. You can also say that I support or I don't support for these reasons and then you sit down. Now our note hands. Each speaker will speak three minutes. Tata, you are number one, number two, number three, number four. Apana, this was wearing a yellow, yes, you are number four.
Yes, you are number four, number five, Tata, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine. Then you are number ten. We will take the next round. Can you all come at the front? this side. So that when you come as number one to speak, you speak and then you go back to your seat. So that you don't cause unnecessary chaos. You can proceed, Tata.
Let me welcome you and thank you for your presence here and let me greet all the people of Daou who are here. We thought wasting time, I do not have a problem with this bill, but there is something that I want to mention.
Okay, I understand, it's fine. My name is Aubakwe Chaubusi. I'm from Bosile Cooperative, a farmer here in Daou. Ma'am, I have read this thing and this thing truly speaking it will help us a lot to protect this bill. To implement the bill. The reason why I'm saying this is because ma'am, if you can go around Daou and look at the land that is no longer being cultivated, it's a lot of land. But it's a supportive mode of farming.
If the government does not help us, the farmers to use this land, how are we going to do?
Last time, M E C S U issued a reckless statement saying she is no longer going to support Daou farmers for the next coming three years. I feel that statement is malicious truly speaking. But the government is the one who's supposed to see to it that the land must be protected, it must be cultivated, it must produce food at the end of the day. So I would like to ask the parliament, please appoint the capable leaders to make sure that our land is protected. We are living in a communal land in Daou.
Lastly, we're living in a communal community, so I would like to know how the chiefs will respond to this matter.
Thank you.
Number two, can we proceed?
Let me start by greeting everyone who is here and to start with the chief and the representative of the department who are here. I am Trumpang Deiker from Mayera here in Daou. From Itikin Community Forum. Yeah, secretary. Yeah. Will this public hearing be very instrumental? We've been attending this public hearings, but right now I would like to know if this public hearing will be instrumental. As far as I'm concerned, there is no one can interpret the law than Kofeta Constitution. I'm so disappointed that all the departments that are in Daou are not doing what they're being paid for. We are currently attending the hearings and this bill, these people from the officials from legislature, but this thing in English, they can't read properly. So why not copy our home languages when they present those briefings?
Previously, when we had similar meetings from the legislature, the department came with the English documents. They didn't provide the Sichuan document for our elderly ones to understand and to read these bills. I've read this bill and what I've noticed from this bill is this.
So we can agree to this bill, but not recreate our land. Whereas our land have been claimed. So why not recreate our land first then we can go agree with this bill?
I've read this bill and I understand it. So I'm a representative at my forum and as I've noticed, some places they have claimed their land and we don't know if our land have been claimed or will be given back our land through this process.
If you can go to R 504, that road.
I do not see any progress here in Daou, especially from where I come from in Mayera. When you go through R 24, you see there are so vast land that are used for resorts. White people are putting the animals there. We don't know if we can be provided a land to use it. It angers me to see that we don't utilize our land here in Daou and as we've been giving the land, we would like to use it as youth. It angers me as a youth to see that I can't do anything and there's nothing that we are given to help to utilize this land.
A good day to everyone who's present in this hall. My name is Eric Gads from Itikin Community Farming Forum. I'm not going to say that the gentleman that preceded me has said what I was going to say, but I would like to add on what he has said. First and foremost, you must acknowledge that you didn't give us enough time to prepare for this hearing. Now, when you peruse the law, you need to compare it with the previous one. As you have indicated, that this bill is an amendment to the previous law. So now you did not give us the opportunity to peruse the law and to compare with the previous law to see where are the challenges in the previous one. Now, you have engaged us unexpectedly. So we ask ourselves that are there other things that you are communicating that we should not know, things that you are discussing in private? We need the land as my Leonard friend has mentioned. Now, as we, as Itikin Community Farming Forum and the residents of Mayera, should we approve this bill? This draft bill is not intended to shield current landowners against the implementation of appropriation without compensation bill. This bill, it will not exclude Mayera village tribal authorities from claiming their land for their farmers. renters or invaders. law? We hope that it does not disadvantage or the disadvantaged farmers in Mayera when it comes to food security. And lastly, the bill will not exacerbate patronage. I am Kamochelo Johannes Blom. From Dr. Ruth. In the Nalidi Local Municipality. From Devondale Village. I've seen this preservation and land use bill. In Devondale, we have land that has been hired. And this land is used for agriculture. There are toilets that have been constructed in that land. Now, we are in doubt. Because truly speaking, in Devondale, we need residential land. I think it's a problem.
It is because we have erected checks in Devondale due to the fact that there were RDP houses constructed in Devondale.
I think it's a problem.
So I don't know. This land, is it officially ours or are we just dwellers there?
I think it's a problem.
We need land in Devondale so that services can be provided.
Thank you. Let me take this opportunity to greet everyone to start with, to start with the chief, Kosi Mankurua. I'd like to say, Mr. Mokurua.
Greet our guests of today from the parliament.
I'd like to say, Mr. Mokurua.
Let me start by greeting our program director, Ms. Treti.
I, for the start, I have a doubt.
We've got outstanding bill.
I think it's a problem. I think it's a problem.
To be given our land back.
I think it's a problem.
Today, we are speaking about preservation and development of agricultural land bill.
I think it's a problem.
My doubt is because... It causes a confusion because we've got another bill that says that we're giving back our land. Now, if we continue with this bill, there won't be any confusion or conflicts between these two bills.
Thank you for this question that I wanted to raise.
I'm from Swazara Neke, Sisosapato. And in this bill...
I think it's a problem.
I think it's a problem.
I think it's a problem.
My worry is that there is a land that is under the municipality.
I think it's a problem.
That land is for agriculture, but it's not used for agriculture. It's used for mining.
I think it's a problem.
One speaker mentioned that some land have been hired.
I think it's a problem.
It has been hired to the people who can use it because the Department of Agriculture cannot help the people who cannot, who do not have the resources.
I think it's a problem. I think it's a problem.
In agreement to this bill, I saw one point in chapter six.
I think it's a problem.
It talks about the surveying of the land that can be used for agriculture.
I think it's a problem.
I have a suggestion. I think that the points that have been put in there, they are relevant.
I think it's a problem.
And my suggestion is that the land have been used for the purpose that was supposed to be.
I think it's a problem. I think it's a problem. I think it's a problem.
And if we can expropriate those land that have been used for mining, we can use them for the right purposes of agriculture.
I think it's a problem. Lastly...
I agree with this bill to protect this, but lastly...
I think it's a problem.
The farmers, they can be helped with the resources, but another thing is regarding money.
Mostly in northwest.
Lastly, in northwest, the farmers are not helped or be given powers to use the land. So if they can be provided with resources to utilize the land that they've been given to them.
White people are taking lands, but it is for the wild animals around the townships and the areas around Dr. Ruth. The farming areas of agricultural land are being taken to be used for the wild animals.
It is important that if we are given the land, we must also be given the title deeds because the whites use this land to put their animals and we cannot use that land that has been provided to us. I thank you.
I'd like to say, Mr. Mokurua.
Let me greet all the people who are gathered here today and to greet the paramount chief, Kosi Mankurua.
I'm Shadrak Komuya Dira from Mokopela B.
I'm Shadrak Komuya Dira from Mokopela B.
I think it's a problem.
My concern here is about the cattle.
I think it's a problem.
Mokopela B Village is a big village.
I think it's a problem.
They had cattle, sheep, goats.
I think it's a problem.
These animals do not have water.
I think it's a problem.
We have a pump that has been not working for about two years.
I think it's a problem.
It's a pump that is being used by, a windmill that is pumping the water.
I think it's a problem.
We have reported it and they said they will come to help us. There's everything in there. There's a tank, there's a pump.
I think it's a problem.
Now, our cattle work for a long distance to find water? We have a problem with a crawl, Mokotla. Now, we have applied for the assistance and we already have three years without having assistance.
I think it's a problem. I'm sure it's from 2019 row applies until now, but so far...
Since 2019, we've been waiting for the help. We've shown them the place and we've shown where we want it to be put. And even today, we don't have any assistance.
I think it's a problem.
In Mokopela B, we've got a garden that's been used by female and males.
Garden here is 10 hectares. So, garden here, it's a problem.
This garden is a big garden and it needs water and the fence needs to be properly constructed.
I think it's a problem.
We asked the government to help us to buy us two Jojo tanks so that we can have water.
Thank you. I'd like to say, Mr. Mokurua.
Let me greet the leadership from the parliament and our paramount chief, Kosi Mankurua.
I'd like to say, Mr. Mokurua.
And greet all those who have gathered to this meeting today.
I think it's a problem.
My name is...
Andre Skolberg.
My name is Mr. Andre Skolberg from Bukuto Project.
I support this bill.
However, there's one point that makes me support this bill. that the land will be properly surveyed and that also there will be assistance with provision of tools for agriculture.
Because the previous bill does not assist us at all,
especially us working in the projects. we are about 130 hectares and we've been given over 400 hectares of land. So it is difficult for us to work on that land. Now, considering the land that has been allocated to us, that 400 hectares, the municipality also imposes in our land by building RDP houses. And it's a challenge for us because now our animals are in danger. Since they've been digging holes, our animals fall into those holes and die. So now, there is a land nearby whereby we plead with the government. If they can buy us that land, then it could be resourceful for us.
I think it's a problem.
Now, you go to a land with the intention to work on it. However, when you get to that land, you cannot work on it. Now, we have committee members that we have elected. We are forced to elect such members. However, they are elected and put into possession without proper training and training, yes, and teaching. Now, the problem is that with these committee members, we cannot advise them, we cannot engage with them. They just do whatever they like, even though it is not beneficial for us.
I think it's a problem.
Now, my last point is that we have boholes that have been erected in our farms.
I think it's a problem.
Now, those boholes, we cannot utilize them because we do not have the proper tools and resources to use them, to use those boholes. So we cannot draw out the water from those wells. Now, our animals have to travel long distances in order to attain water. Thank you.
So, Rita, can I remind the speakers to please stick to three minutes given? And also, as much as some of the issues are not related to the bill, when they raise such, because we are also a relevant department for the very same issues that they are raising, can they indicate which municipality that they are talking about? Like, that the address, the latter speaker raised all those things, but we did not get which municipality that they are talking about?
Thank you, Program Director, for giving me this opportunity. And I'd like to greet the parliament that is before us today. And our paramount chiefs and also the chiefs that are in our meetings. I'm Mr. Joseph Rantapela. I am a deputy secretary of an organization that I'm leading. We are also known as One Seventy Six Irrigation Scheme. There is no other project or other organization that is suffering like our organization. We've been suffering since nineteen eighty-three while Mr. Mamupe was still the leader. Until today, our land has been, it has been said that it is being developed. Even today, we have not seen that development. And also our paramount chiefs who are leading us. They give us, offer us the land so that we do not have conflicts as neighbors. They give us an approximate of two point eight hundred hectares. But such land need expertise such as land surveyors and engineers. So that they can do their work in an appropriate manner as they should do. Now, the problem is that what they were supposed to do, they were supposed to give us a feedback. In order for us to carry on with our objectives and mission or to use that land for agriculture. But that has not materialized. Even our M E C, Mrs. Mama Holo. Who is in charge of agriculture in the Northwest Province. She is failing us in all areas. We do have engagements with her in various sectors. So that she could take to heart our suffering because we do want to land, we would want to farm and take care of the land. Today, she's promising us that that land will be used for agriculture. But tomorrow, she's a totally different person. We have even taken a step to go to parliament to raise our concerns. Because this province, Northwest Province, does not take us seriously. Hence, I say that I thank you for this opportunity as a partaker. Because I want to see if the parliament is going to do the same thing as the M E C is doing. I have twenty years following her. I'm sixty years old today, which means that I'm... I have not received any help. Our issues are still stagnant. We only see our politicians only having their changes because they do whatever they like. All the politicians in Darwin, they do what they like and also they have favoritism and nepotism. And then they come and tell us about bills and constitutions, which we do not know. Now, I'm pleading with you, implement what we agree on. So, I have a hope that the government that is before us will see what they do with us as One Seventy Six Project. Kosi Mankuruan is behind us, supporting us hundred percent. We have engagement meetings with him now and then and he also writes letters to the M E C on our behalf. But unfortunately, your politics and your issues are failing us. Good day, leadership and also our paramount chief, Kosi, our meets. I'm Mr. Tata... First of all, I do recognize this bill. But now, I want to know what does it say about the sketch that it has put here? Or the case that it has put on our government employees? Because when we talk about land. Government employees, they leave us behind. Even if you have the capacity. With regard to agriculture, they still leave you behind. But the same person with the qualifications that he or she has. Who works in the mines. Is being considered. Who earns three times more than them. Now, here's another issue. I'm asking myself, does this bill, this bill is not only going to take the tribal land? And then leave behind those who have that land who have not retained it to the rightful owners? Not knowing where did they buy that land? And that person who sold them that land, where did he or she get that authority? I plead that this bill. Should include all citizens of this... It must not do the way that our... They only instill crop people. But when it comes to livestock. They leave them outside. Thank you. Good day, everyone. I'm Mr. Mpo Po Po Kui.
From Swazarene, Kama Mousa.
I would like to especially greet our paramount chief. And peace be with you. And also I'd like to greet the parliamentarians.
Thank you. A bill in nineteen seventy and the current one had a tally in a way.
Maybe so. You just mentioned that this current bill and the nineteen seventy bill are not in conjunction.
The ironic part is that previously, Kani Ma Fatse is a... This system currently is being implemented. And implemented, which the parliament somehow they might know or not.
Now, the ironic thing is that you mentioned, since the law of the nineteen seventy was in use, we did not have the land as our own by the way for tribal use. So, now there is some doubt with regard to the law that's being implemented. Point number one in Mousa, where I come from?
There seems to be this norm, in the form of difora. And difora, they work very well with those in parliament or those in power, the M E C and all that. So, currently, we are here to help amend this amendment bill? But at the end of the day, there's no proper mechanism when it comes to allocating land. The other issue is that we have our people, at the end of the day, allocate the fatse. But due to the fact that when it comes to agriculture, agriculture is a generational thing. But unfortunately, some of us, we are breaking the generational case in terms of trying to build something life out of agriculture. But because of allocation of resources within the agriculture are for certain individuals. Because at the end of the day, it's expensive to farm.
Because at the end of the day, we have land in our hands, but we cannot teach our lesson because it is expensive to farm.
So, since we're a willing participant to be here, we're going to amend this bill. Therefore, I'm mandating you on the following. In terms of those who are in charge. Even some of us, just that we don't have enough resources.
We are mandating the parliament to please give those who do not have the resources, to please stop giving only those who have resources. Because even us, although we do not have the resources, we do have the capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you for your contributions and inputs. I've noted, in fact, as you can see on the table, most of us are noting some of your inputs in such that we've picked up that some of the issues that you raise might not be relevant to the bill itself. But are more of FPSU issues, farmer support issues. Therefore, I would like to plead with the department to take note of that whilst in the meantime. All those speakers that spoke or that raised issues around that. For instance, the latter speaker. Can all those speakers take those, there are forms here, that they can write all those issues that they were talking about? And also, please write those issues that you raised right now on that and we will take it as parliament and compile them, send it to the department for them to address. That the address, you raised issues that are more of farmer support challenges. Can we also write those in those forms so that we can take it with and later on submit it to the relevant department? And also, that the address and the other speaker, you did not mention which municipality that is imposing certain things on your land, like building RDP houses. We want to do a follow-up. We are not here to tick boxes. When you raise issues of land, we take them serious. So, we raise issues that a certain stakeholder is taking your land that has been allocated to people for a certain issue. Now, they are doing something else. It's an issue of, it's a land issue that we have to address as this committee. Can you give us a proper detail so that we can do a proper follow-up and assist our people? Which municipality are you talking about? And all those, the house is full. Not everybody will be able to make their inputs. I would humbly ask and appeal to some of you to submit their inputs. In writing, there are forms that we'll take and our secretariat, the names, city name, municipality, area, forums or schemes. Then you make your input. This time, I will be very much strict on time. I am told that there is an old citizen right at the back of the sitting arrangement. I will humbly ask the people that are assisting us to take a roving mic to him. And he be the first speaker. I'm noting him first because he's too old to climb the stairs and come down.
Ko pa ho re, ba ba tsa me sa ndigwe la ho timo.
And se- and secondly, I am not, we are not trying to be funny. If you are speaking out of the bill, I will humbly, I will immediately stop you. So that you make a submission of all the issues that you want to raise that are not really part of the. Anything else to add, please write it here as an addition to what your speaker has already spoke on. I will take one of you as number seven, one. If there's anything that you need to add, you can fill it in the form. Number eight, that, yes you. Number nine. You are number ten, that. I will take the next round. The first speaker.
Say, thank you very much, Chaperson.
Kiala bo ka, modula stilo. Ki na li di ntlatsi pidi tseki ba ta ho di bua.
I have two points that I want to raise. Kitlo ho tsepa ma tata mo ho section twenty one. I will concentrate on section twenty one. My name is Ha Aesi Musi.
Lina lame ke Ha Aesi Musi.
Ke tjo ko Kakhisano Molopo, komo za ningu bibi duan tla Khame. I'm from Kakhisano Molopo, from a village called Tla Khame. Kitleka ti ke ti amo ka ho ubi duan Tlankapulo. I came here with a ticket from eh Tlankapulo, organization organization called Tlankapulo. Se ke se ba dealing, mobiling, se balaha kamo konz injana. What I've read in this bill, it's read in this eh. Section twenty one provide for the ministeria, for the minister may at his accord or upon required establish advisory committee by notice of the gazette. The act is silent on what would prompt or qualify the minister to establish eh the advisory committee. We ask under which circumstance may a request be made. I want to submit my chair that expert advice with regard to agricultural land, its use and preservation is fundamental and therefore establishing advisory committee ought to be mandatory and cannot be left as something that may happen at the future uncertain occasion. The advisory committee should also be given a clear scope which entirely encourages use of land for its intended purpose. And at provincial level, as opposed to discourages use of same as in the case of a considerable fraction of farmers in the community of Kakhisano Molopo due to lack of resources and desperation occupied state farm to carry out agricultural activities, mainly livestock farming. Pending application to occupy allocation of farm where so where they were then swept off their entire livestock by an act which was unlawful as eviction appeal was still pending. The appeal was ultimately granted in favor of farmers. By that time, by by that time, farmers were left with nothing because there were about one thousand two hundred heads of cattle that were impounded. Chaperson, I I I I understand that this might not be necessarily relevant to this.
Modula stule kela lo cha nyaha ho re ngwe eh kain eh no ka eh ameneta ta le mona utumo.
But 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 I'm raising it because it is a sad situation.
Me ki umaka jana ka ho ne ke kha eh u sanbo tlo ko tata.
People's livelihood have been stopped.
Tela ya ba tya ho insi di sa eh u tuiwe.
About one thousand two hundred heads of cattle were impounded.
Di ho mo di kana one thousand two hundred, di ri ri atsa wa kadi ho ka.
Were taken from Kakhisano Molopo to as far as Virginia.
Di tere ho tjo ko Kakhisano Molopo, ho abo ka kala njwa Virginia.
And were 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 subjected to eh eh livestock auction in Virginia in the free state.
Me kuwa fe lo diere ya ko di fantising za di za za di polo ho lo wa Virginia.
The painful thing is that people could not access Virginia because of the distance.
Sesi mo tlo ko tata ke ho re ba tya ba ho na ho wa wa Virginia, kantla ya ho re ho kakala.
Chaperson, I I I would like you to take this because I I know of people whose cows or heads of cattle were confiscated and they do not have anything at the moment and have already resorted to the loan shark for money because their wives and children are sick.
Mo modula stule twa ta ho ro tsa tya kain eh no ka ho ne, ho na li ba tya ba baile ba amu hiwa di ho mo za bo ne. Le ho ne jana baile ba di mama di eh ka ka ho ne ba sa di ba bo ne le ba na bo ne ba alwaana.
I know that you have.
You your time is up unfortunately.
Eh kama so bi ra na kuwa ho re ifitik.
Please submit that information to us.
Ka tu re ko pa ho re oro kwa le le tse di musi tu eno, me wikis eh ho re re ta re ne lo na.
Um seemingly, there's a lot of, we will, we might have a challenge. Most people wants to speak.
Ho le ba cha eke te re kitlo ho na lo kuwa eka ka ho ne, bunzi tja ba tya ba ta ho bua.
And we are here to listen to them.
Me re fano ho tla ho ba re tsa.
Now. We will be very, I will ask the speakers to be brief, straight to the point. Immediately, I'm timing every speaker here.
Jano kitlo ho ko pa ho re si bui si mulesi we, senne buo kutua ne, me se kama la le sata ne monte. Kitlo ho ba na ko mo si bui si mulesi.
I advise you do the same because when you speak, if your three minutes is up, I will just tell you your three minutes is up, please give the microphone to another speaker.
Ke tla ho ka ko lo la ho re lo eno direjalo ka ho ne fa, me to tya ka ho eme ra re efela. Kitlo ho ra ho re efidili, me ofe si bui sesela telan su na ho ra bui.
Unfortunately, that's how we have to do if we want to cover most people to speak.
Eh kama so bi ke tse le ro sanzo ho re di reka yo ne fe lo ho re ba ta ho re ba ta, re fa ba tya ba le ba ntsi tso na ho re ba bui.
The second speaker.
Si bui sesela telan.
Your three minutes is starting. Immediately you greet us.
Eme ra ho ye 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 si mula, fao se na ho re dumedi sa fe. Eh ta kidumedi se we atape lebe, kidumedi se le ba ta ko pa no, kidumedi se. Greetings to the leadership and everyone who's come to the meeting. Yo bua mfa ke ke no si kagoo, ho tjo ko Kakhisan. Eh reta mu Kakhisano mole, ra u twa kantla ya di bilie, bilie au ma kati di hiti ne ra dumala na le o. Uh from Kakhisano, where we come from, we have heard about the bill and also have noted the bill, the bill that came previous to this one. Eh ri di re te ma tataro na ko Kakhisano komu singa ta Khame. And that bill caused us a lot of problems eh in eh Tla Khame, in Kakhisano. Mo so ta Khame, ko du ku ri ku we, ki di polasi li di tras, te te le sa bu pu tja twa. Tla Khame is surrounded by farms from the previous regime. Te ele ho ri ri le ra di rama itekwa ah ho di ko pa mopusho, me pusho ya ri di neela. Where we have pleaded with the government to give it to to give them to us and they did allocate them to us. Kana kuweo chief director eh ne le mele tia Nbojote. Eh that time, Mrs. Bojote wa- Bojote was the chief director. Me na re mo sa mo ya di wa ka, hati na re chi re kiwa Taile. Now, as the years uh came along, Mr. Otahile was then the chief director. Me di polasi na i taridi amo ka aditadi herisia tabashueu, si elongarba shuwa ho ri sa mo ko tjo. But then he 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 repossessed the the eh the land that was allocated to us and allocated to the white farmers. Me na ra ri po ta so sa ita to, renara ra 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 ta di ko mu ra ho shuti sabashueu, me ko no ka na yalo na ra ho shuti sabashueu, ra te nyaa ko mu ita ro. Now, we told him that we're going to move those those white farmers and uh uh place our our livestock in those farms and we did such. Moraga three months eh ke hai na wa ri di polasi, ke sa pu sho abar buila la keti. Now, after three months, he mentioned that those that livestock is for the government and then he opened a case against us. Rese kilialo ra hellataru una keti, araku una keti, kadi te di sa macheka twenty twenty three, ki ahwa ta di ko mu ita ro na ho di powanda ko Virginia. Now, we went to court, won the case, but in March twenty twenty three, he took those cattle and uh impounded them and then went to Virginia to for uh for for auction. Me mo di ko mu iti, baile ba ta pa di ko mu ita, ba ta ba sa roote, kamba ba sa nama i karabe, sa ba roote ri le ma to na ba di klo keti. Now, with the cattle that uh the livestock that they chose was the people who do not, who do not know how to read or write. But those who are learned, they did not touch them. Le sa ba shue ba di klo keti. And also the white farmers' cattle, they left them behind. Ya ni ke si le lo sa ro na se okota Khame, karena karena ra alwa le ba na ba na ho no no wa di kuwa lenka di na, re ko pa ho tusiwa di parliament. Now, it is our plea as Tla Khame residents that we do not have anything to feed our children. Please help us as the gov- as the government. Kiala bo. Thank you.
Dada, we need that information. Submit.
Re ko pa ho re oro kwa le le tse di musi tu eno.
Are you gonna need assistance?
Atatoka chuso ho re ba ho chusa ka ho. Yes, please. Now, before I start my three minutes, I just want to make a plea to the government that you call people to come and then you complain when they don't come. Now, when they are here and they want to speak, it's another problem. Okay, greetings to everyone and our paramount chief. Eh ken na Freddie, le tsohel, no no ho le tsohela, ki da ko ko bra siya araya hemo ho eh kupu dumu, meto ta ki te reka Freddie. My other name is Freddie. Ba ha eh ke ke re me durele balimi ba Tao, balimi ri ba Tao. We are burdened as farmers in Tao. Re chungili ho re na ra ho tlo ka la ba na ba ro na eh, si ri tse temporar na ba ro si tlo hile. We are scared and concerned. What are we going to leave our children, what we have gained from our forefathers? Ri nyala nyala le mona wo ka ho re eke te, oka atli sa, te re. Pick that land and reside in it instead of using it as a farming land. Seka imo ho yo ne kuha di eh, no ra 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 helo store ki pusho, itle ha ra kontra ka isia se heti, ba tya ha ba si itela. For example, right now in this month, the government did built, did erect a storehouse for us, but they did not complete it. And this month, someone took it and made it a residential place for themselves. So kaya lo re ne sesa mona utumo, mona utumo wa eh le inile mona ka kanga wa nineteen seventeen, mono na ho re, oto oto ho di ra, oto oto ho tse ra cha nyaa, ha ra ha ro na le ma tataro. Now, we support this bill which is amending the nineteen seventy act, which is going to help us and strengthen us to uh and and also and also assist us with our issues. Me ba di re di pu sho ba ka ho eh mo sa mo isakdiro. But program director, your government employees. Ke bo ne kape ba te nyamba tumu ma hati nga temotuwa. They are the ones who allocate people land in the farming and agricultural land. Seka yo ho ne ho na li nku eh na heju balimisi, motenha masimu, eh cho ju eh ne ilue mo ah, yo eh si mo toha masimu. For example, there is someone who has allocated a house in a farming land and that person is not a farmer at all. Yo sa iti kiwa kandui haru tusen ba ha eh re kisijin ke ba ke ba di re di pu sho. I'm talking about a house uh in Ari Tuse, which was sold by the government employees. Eh le kompiyo ni di re lemo tata, yo bo heti le tsi. And which has caused havoc until today. In kai we ba ha eh ke ta ra ta ho i kuwa ki ho re, eh na ro na ra ra ho la re bo na di plus, te di ka u tshwanele ma hai. Ba ba inba tshwane ba tsa may, kantla ya ho re ba tsa ba ho re ma hai aga toha si kama lo ka, motenha di plus, ba ba di re kisachip. Ya no so se, sa re cho sa ka ho si kli le mo ho ro na mo Tao, ntarashebe di se le ka ka. Now, eh as we grew up, we did see a lot of farmers vacate in their land because they saw that the villages nearby are invading in the in the in in their land. So now they sell that land, that farming land very cheaply and this is what is we, this is what we are seeing today in our area. Mu bui nyaha ho eh mo sa mo isakdiro, we leka farmer support unit, ki ta ho ro na mo Tao hai di re le sentle. Ho ne jana jana ba le ba ra ba kisa tarata mo Tao, ri ti sentle, ho re di tarata iti njwa mo Tao, me tarata hai ati wa mo Tao. Now, uh program director, you mentioned that uh you mentioned uh farming support. So but here in Tao, that does not work. They will say that they've erected the fence, whereas they did not erect it at all.
Your time is up, Dada. Thank you so much.
Eh agi du medise eh ba tsa may si wa ba inba ro na ba kile na.
Let me greet you all, our guests who are here.
Eh be getlo tse wo ho si yo ale ha si le le wo ho si yo kama Nkurua ni.
And to greet you, uh the leadership of this uh village, uh the 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 leadership, king, king, uh paramount chief, Nkuruani.
Eh na kitli eh no akaka ho tla ho tsuma da se lo, ho re kisa tuliha cha nyaha, kompiyo ne se si video angale ho ko bill.
I'm I'm here to to praise this uh uh program of of today, this bill.
Lina la kaki na eh tiki kanati, tsumo mo ka pela eh, wo wo ho si yo ha, ho si ma ure, ma spala wa Tao.
I'm from this um municipality of Tao.
Eh bilie ki kama nyalo ne eh komenaha ni.
I support this bill.
Mo we mo yo ho re eh, ta tse ho ale ha si, ho aga ho tjo ha eh, mo di na konse di iti ne. Ra wa na ta tse ho ale ha si, eh na te ho mo to mo we, apu shue eti aga ta ka di peto ho se le ho re. Eh shumaro la ale ha si le, bua lo aba umu, no ba ti re le ju ale ha si, etaba ju la mo shola.
We have lost the 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 land from the previous regime and we we plead to the government that they can help us to get our land back.
Da ne se ne getla se ko pa nyala mo bilin li tuliha cha nyu ayone ho re. Aba i ko pa nyala ma ho si ame le lo na eh eh ale ha si, ya ka eh le bo ne, ba si re le te ba ale ha si, ho tjo ha ko mo ra ho. Ho ne ya no, eh bele ho ne ba ka ju la, ka du eti, eska na, inne bo inne bo ne ra ba shupa kapunona, alo ho re. Eh bo sa may si yo bo ka ta kati la, eh le ho re ro na ha re le mo ho se, pe se le ho re bo ne, ba isi or mo shola, aso ne ki, ko ma ra ho tla ve re re leela.
So we plead to the department to engage with our leadership to help us to to get our land back and to use it again.
Re re ho no ho ba shupa Khame nona, ka wo wo ita taurna ba pe la ka ta, no ba reka eh ba reka eh ba reka la ale, ba tse la ale ha si ba reki, ba ni wa speak.
So that we cannot point them with figures that they didn't help us, eh like they they left the the our forefathers when they were stolen the the land from.
Eh ya no ke tse na mo 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 sa mo yaya, ya tuliha cha nyala ha si le le la temotiu. Eh mo we mo yo wa wa temotuo, au au tse na mo 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 bo ka pela eh, ka ho tse na pu dumu. Eh le ha si la temotuo, eh le ha si le le mani la deiri.
Regarding to the agriculture from this area eh from here to Pu Dumu, it was used for agriculture eh before.
So la ha si le ri la ra le amo ho, ke ke pu sho ya pele.
So the previous regime took the land from us.
Re ko pa eh sa may shalo ne bua lo ko ma ra ho, eh kona ko na le le bu mu ya la mo ho ro.
So we ask that we eh get the land back so that we can use it.
Eh ga ka lo eh eh bo sa may si ki halamo.
I do thank you. That's my submission.
Sorry, Dada. Dada, we did not get your name?
Eh Papa, ra ra re ko pa ho re obu obu ne tse kina la ka ho.
Can you please submit there your name, your contact details?
Ro ko pa ho, oya kuwa me, ye ho kuwa.
Your your name, your contact details and submit what you just said about the land claim that was. I'm not sure whether there is a land claim or not, but there is a land that was previously taken and you need assistance. Can you all submit that there?
Re ko pa pe lo ote ore bilitse kina la ka ho habe, me ho tjo fo eh oya kuwa ka tu eh, ware o kwa eh ote o o kwa le di ntlatsa ka ho. Maleba na le ho tli ma le fatse jalo li jago, eh ha ka ka tla lo cha nyaha, no ra jago. Eh li na ra ga ki Timoti, getlo kjo kanati.
Eh my name is Timoti.
Getlo kjo kanati, mo ka pela eh village.
Thank you, Dada. The next one. The next one.
A good day distinguished guests and also our parliament chief. Greetings to all the farmers. My name is Mrs. Kididimeze Khushubelwa. I'm from Makasawana, which is a very small village. I am a farmer in Arituseng Corporation. We have one thousand two hundred hectares and we are one hundred and thirty-seven farmers. I stand here to support this bill. However, I have a concern. Now, the chairperson, you mentioned that this is not a tick box exercise. I'm happy that you are saying that because I once went to Mafiki with a parliament public hearing and there it was actually a tick box exercise. So I'm happy that you mentioned that. Now, I want to reiterate the words of a previous young speaker who said, when are we going to be responded? When are we going to get the response and how? Now, here's my concern. I'm a farmer along the route of N eighteen when you go to Kimbali. Now, when you go to Kimbali on the national road on the left-hand side, you're going to see things that are unbelievable. Now, we that's why I say that I support this bill more so with the preservation of the land because our intention was that we were going to build a dam because we often have dry weeks. Now, when you have dry weeks, we do not farm. And our plantation dies. Now, for example, I I I planted the watermelon, pumpkins and so on in a five hectare of land and they all died. So now this preservation issue. Now, where we were going to build our little dam there, the land was dispossessed. Now, it is a shame. It is sad because maybe those people who dispossessed the land, they did not know what they're doing because underneath the ground you have big pipes that we're going to use for for our farming purposes. Now, I want to thank the chief tency and also a plea to the government to please help our chief tency because they have taken this matter to the courts and now it is it is easy to to lose something, but it is difficult to have it returned to you. So it is an issue that we're having. We have a farmer who who does not have a place to stay. Yes, we have a technician who does not have a place to stay, who takes care of us. That technician is the very same person that we talked about that his house was dispossessed. So now we don't know the person that has resided in that area. We're still looking for them. A good day, honorable members. And I would like to humbly greet our parliament chief and the chief tency who are in our midst. Well, one can thank the bill that we are going to discuss today. My name is my name is Mr. Bob Bonso Khosi. I'm a farmer in Arituseng Corporation. And I'm also a livestock farmer. Now, this bill that I noticed that it talks about the minister appointing a committee that will overlook the those who have expertise. And also there will be a representative for farmers. And it talks about ten members who will be in that committee. Now, I'm asking myself, South Africa as big as it is, what is going to happen? The farming area, will it ever be effective? Now, Now, to my observation, it says that there will be people who will be appointed in that committee. However, there is no process whereby there will be members of people who will be supporting those people, those members of the committee that has been appointed by the minister. Because currently, Hona Lee invasion near the farming land, but Hona Mo Hona Le Ba Baba Levela Khori, eh, ba enforce the protection, yeah, the very land because everybody, oh, Hona Khodira, S, he or. Now, what I've noted with my observation is that there's going to be a gap, a loophole there because now there is no one that had that that will have oversight on ensuring that these processes are implemented. Now, this will cause people to do as they please. Now, when it comes to special planning, it is very silent. The bill is very silent with that. And the special planning will help with implementation of the issues that have been mentioned in the bill. So now when it is silent, it will it will have a difficulty with preservation of agricultural land. Enforcement there in terms of ensuring, Khori, Kho Enfosiwa, so that protecting the land, Leonie, Kibona, Elisa Lente, Leonor, how are we going to deal because, Oh, Tla Be, Oh, Hona, Le Bo, Tada, Yo, Khori, Batoba, Invader, Le Hazi, Obopale, Like, Khori, Ha, Oh, Hona, Khori, Porta, Silosio, and then the law enforcement agency, Abakonokotaya, those report, if you, Oh, Oh, Zanako, Justice System, Oru, Kabua, Galilea, Hazi, Le, Watla, Oh, Bosar, Gilahama. Now, the issue of enforcement of the of the matters that are mentioned here, it is it is very silent. Now, if that's the case, it means that there's no land enforcement officer. So the person that can ask you, the person who's residing in that land, where do you get that land? There's no such person to do that.
Sorry, Putum. I'm very sorry. You are raising very crucial and important issues, especially the issue of alignment with the existing legislations. I really appreciate your input, but you are not gonna sit down. You're gonna go there because what you are raising is more of a back course for us to go back to parliament and have a look of how do we then align these two so that we we critically look at the issues that which one is is working hand in hand with this one and where do we improve the other? You are not gonna sit down. You're gonna go there and submit your inputs there because we really need them. Thank you. And the others that you could not finish. I thank you, Putum. Next speaker, please.
I have a I have a concern that ninety-nine percent of the land that's been occupied, it's occupied by white people. But when I look at when I look into this at this hall, hundred percent it is black. Black people who are here. Now, now I'm asking myself, the land that you're talking about that you're going to develop, is it the land that's been dispossessed by the white people? Or is it the land that you as the government has taken and given to your children, incinerating that it is there, it is your children's, but actually it is your land? Now, Now, I need to emphasize this because in nineteen sixty-one, there was a certain man by the name of Prechard who came in our area and demarcated this land, but now and giving it to the white people. Now, what the chief tency is doing behind me, it is that they are allocating this land to us so that we can have residential land. Now, for example, where I come from in Gachisona, that land, it is part of Bantu Trust Land, which was given to us. However, the Land Affairs Department has taken that land from us and now they want to to lease it to us, back to us. Now, I've I've been going to the courts, even to the high courts, to 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 have a case in this matter. And they have assured me, the Land Affairs Department, that I will never get such land back. Now, now, I now, now that is why you see a lot of residents who come from Lakhameen are those who have gone to the high courts because they've they've been dispossessed, their land and their livestock. Now, I don't know, I'm asking myself, isn't our poverty enough for you? Or I don't know what else you want us to do? Now,
Before you sit down, Puti, before you sit down, seemingly there's a constructive land disposition. We need those details. It might as it might sound as if we are just cutting you. There are issues that are very much important that you raised in your area. Please submit those there. Your name, your details, even if it means you take the email address of our secretariat so that you submit your court cases, your court case numbers and the story behind so that we do a follow-up, especially to the department as to what has happened and with your side. We need that. It is our responsibility to attend to such.
So now, I I have I have a problem with doing that because it seems like you parliamentarians do not know how to read. You only know how to listen?
Start from before he left and where he is he was saying now. Before he left, he said some things and then when he came back, when I said he must submit there, he also continued. Can you start where he he was saying?
Okay, so yeah, in short, so the the issue is that, yes, this bill, it is good, but it looks like it is only when you talk about preservation and development of this land, you're talking about the white people's land that is going to be preserved and developed. So now you are being biased because we, as the residents such as such as we do not own land, we do not have the land. It has been dispossessed by the white people. Now, the chief tency, what they do, actually we have forced them to give us land only to have residence, but
Do not have a place to stay. And those who have been in the village do not want to share the land. So this brings quarrels and fightings amongst ourselves. So now we asking, can the government please assist in this matter? Go to Tachame and then see what can you do in order to assist us?
Now, I want to first thank the Department of Agriculture with the assistance that they give us. But now the issue is that they do not make follow up. To see that the assistance that have been given to me, am I utilizing it accordingly? Or am I not using it well? So there is no follow up with regard to the help and assistance that have been allocated to the farmers. Now, there are many projects that have been allocated to Tachame that have collapsed. Due to the fact that there is no follow up from the government, from the department with the assistance that they've given us. And also another thing is that when they assist us, they assist us in groups. Whereas you only find only one or two people have the willingness to continue with the assistance that have been given to them. So it poses a challenge to those who have a willing spirit to carry on with the work. Now, there are many projects that have been allocated to Tachame that have collapsed. Due to the fact that there is no follow up from the government, from the department with the assistance that they've given us. And also another thing is that when they assist us, they assist us in groups. Whereas you only find only one or two people have the willingness to continue with the assistance that have been given to them. So it poses a challenge to those who have a willing spirit to carry on with the work. Now, another issue is that yes, the government has provided services such as providing water for us in Tachame. But now the problem is that it is only for certain individuals so that their livestock could have water. Now, I myself do not have water. So we have grouped ourselves as individuals so that we could build erect bow holes. And now, the problem is that there has been excavation that's been done. But now we need help with extracting that water. And also we have erected a wooden mill. But we're still going to need things like pipes and so on. So we are pleading with the government. Since you can see that we are trying to do something, can you help those who are trying to help themselves?
Good day, ladies and gentlemen. I take this opportunity to thank our Parliament Chief, Kosi Mankuruan. And also the parliamentarians who are in this assembly. My name is Mr. Lenyato Tshewu. I am from Leepatai Mane, a local municipality. It is a small municipality that is made of two towns, Blumhof and Christiana. Now, I want to indicate that Leepatai Mane, it is a land for agriculture. Now, in this document, I noted that there is a consultation process. Now, when I see, or when I look at the stakeholders who have attended that process, I will quote only four of them. These are the institutions that were part of this consultation. These are the institutions that have been there since nineteen seventy. It is a small municipality that is made of two towns, Blumhof and Christiana. Now, I want to indicate that Leepatai Mane, it is a land for agriculture. Now, in this document, I noted that there is a consultation process. Now, when I see, or when I look at the stakeholders who have attended that process, I will quote only four of them. These are the institutions that have been there since nineteen seventy. Now, according to my knowledge, the little knowledge I have, these institutions that were part of this consultation. These are the institutions that have been there since nineteen seventy. And it is institutions that were led by the white people. Now, I'm very worried myself. I have the same concern as the gentleman from Tachame. That this bill that we are going to approve, will it benefit our people? More so the black people? But I'm not going to dwell on that. Now, honorable parliamentarians, according to this document, Now, I see that agricultural land that has been allocated, it is thirteen comma four million hectares. Now, when you go to Leepatai Mane by itself, I've already indicated that it is an agricultural municipality. We produce vegetables such as potatoes, onions, tomatoes, and we also have livestock. But our challenge is only one. We do not have land. Land is available. It is vast. But it is a white elephant. There are farms. But you cannot enter into those farms. Because if you enter, they tell you that it is, the owners are in Western Cape. They say that the upper surface of the land you can use. But underneath you have mineral resources. That are being controlled by the government. Now, what we experience in Leepatai Mane is that the land is stagnant, it's not being used. It is only used by those who are coming to mine using open-cast mining process. Now, we are pleading with the government to please help us. That unused farms in those towns, let them be developed and be developed for our people. We have about thirty to forty percent in Leepatai Mane. Those who have extensive knowledge of farming and agriculture. I'm talking about livestock farmers who can breed cattle, goats, sheep, and also who can farm, who can plant. Now, I support this bill. Now, I would like to say to the parliament, I want to say that let us, since this subdivision, let's subdivide the land to those who do not have the land because others have more than enough. Thank you. I'm not going to waste time by greeting, I'm finishing my time. I only have one concern with this bill. Can you state your name, Dad? I'm David Koki. From Itekenh, communal farmers. Now, it stays here that the minister and the M C have the authority to control the land. But here we're talking about communal land which is not owned by the minister nor the M C. And our chief parliament is not included there. Since he is the owner of the land. Now, doesn't this mean that our chieftains are undermined? Because I'm saying this because truly speaking, we do not have ownership of the land. So we do not have land at all. But you do not talk about, which also is the problem. Because they can dispossess the land since we do not have a place to stay. Even the farmers are fighting with those who are seeking land for residence, for to reside on. We appreciate the bill and support it. But it will not work in our case. Because it's going to cause chaos amongst the farmers and those who need land only to reside on. If the chiefs were involved regarding the authority of the land, maybe it could be managed and being controlled. I remember in twenty nineteen when Mr. Begitella was the Minister of Agriculture, he did come to us, we gave him our inputs and told him that we do not have land. And still, until today, we don't have any response. By that, I'm pleading with you to do the right thing.
Thank you, Tata. Putuam, before we go to the chief, can I get someone there shining the lights and? Wow, wow. Can I get someone there, one? You are not gonna appoint speakers, I will. There is only one chairperson of this meeting. Only one, but many speakers. In that part, I see that there are five of you that are coming. If you're gonna come as five, I'm gonna look at the other side and appoint other people to speak and leave you out. I said after this, because I'm gonna give the chief. But I'm following process that I'm pleading that I get one person there. Because we felt we will be leaving you behind, but you are coming as five. I don't know what you want to do now. Puti, same as Udata there, same as other people, they've raised their hands. Now, can we get? Apa we're gonna work together here in this meeting? And this meeting has one chairperson and many stakeholders that want to speak. And different approaches to submit their inputs, that's one. Now, there are people that were seated there in that corner waving a torch, earphone, right? Indicating that we don't want to be left behind. Now, I'm accommodating that grouping. But you want to come and say, remember the process. We were taking five people, ten people right across the house. But as that grouping that sits there, you want to come, five of you, what about the rest of the house? Can we be, can we be fair and be considerate of other people when we want to address these issues? Whoa. Now, if you are coming and you collected all other inputs of other people, but you are this number. Puti, come forward. Come forward. When? Imabuti, Imabuti. Remember we said, we take ten from this side to that side, from top to bottom. But inina, you came five of you from that cluster, that's what I was addressing. What you did was not proper and is totally out of order for any meeting situation. Thank you so much, Putuam, for acknowledgement. We will have Uputi to speak, representing certain speakers there or forums there. Whoa. Now, what we're gonna do? We're gonna take Uputi, take two, and there was a hand on that side. There was a hand, one hand there. Imabuti, there was no other hand, but there was a hand there and one on that, two on that side. And I said I'm not gonna note you. One or two will come and speak, that's what I said. Imabuti, I know what I said. So what I'm gonna do is you, Uputi, you guys, there was a hand there, a legacy hand there, and a hand there. That will be our last from the house and then we're gonna give the chieftains as a final speaker. Do we agree with that? Thank you so much. You are the first one, Putuam. With the yellow banner, you are the second one, you are the third one. There was that hand, there is a data, you are the fourth one. There is a hand, the fifth hand, that is final. Then we give it to the chief. That's what we agreed, all of us, Agir. I get him that now, Uti, he's saying, people are speaking before the chief and are speaking about things that are affecting them. Now, they will forget what they want to say. I'm tempted to say, write down that. But we're gonna come and do this public hearing and leave. People will remind you, the council, traditional council, and the chief, that by the way, we spoke after you spoke, after you have spoken. You're gonna come and leave, but you're gonna leave behind with your people. Now, can I humbly proceed? Puti, you said you are number one. Yenza, you are number one. You. Whoa. We noted five speakers to come here and speak, and they are seated there. That one with the green one is the last one, that comes from your side. Is the last speaker that one who's wearing a green jacket of those that we noted. Now can we proceed with the business of today? Bakhets, I've learnt a word today, bakhets. Bakhayets, ech? Can we please allow the speakers to speak? We are wasting time. There are elderly people within us and if I'm hungry, I can imagine what, how they feel. The first speaker. What you are not gonna do is to change the numbers, number one, come here and speak.
Let me take this time to, revolutionary greetings to our members of parliament.
Greetings to my chief, to our chieftains and also the members of parliament.
Comrades, this bill is deaf and muted and silent about long-hanging fruits such as provision of equipment for vegetable producers and access to marketing. This bill is very silent on the previously disadvantaged individuals and communities with their suffering injustices that they have suffered in the past. I therefore agree with Comrade Chair, how Nutsmola Ubuwa, Orey. The Act of nineteen seventy with its problems, and I'm paraphrasing it in the way that I have put it. Act of nineteen seventy in twenty twenty-three does not agree, not take into considerations laws and times that we are living in. The law is clearly in conflict with all of our wishes stemming from painful past and its injustices to date. And what is our wish? Beyond the presence of our members of parliament and the provincial legislature and their work. All of us as mourners here. Mourners of the land that we do not have today. We want land to plant vegetables. As a low-hanging fruit. The law does not talk about that. This law, to be honest with you, Comrade Chair, it is indicating left. And turning backward. And I'll tell you why. The Freedom Charter to start with. The bill is in total construct, it's in total conflict with the Freedom Charter. The preamble, I'm going to read it. Recognizing that it is in the national interest to preserve and promote the sustainable development of agricultural land for the production of food and other agricultural products for the primary purpose of sustaining and enhancing human life for the benefit of present and future generation. It is the only time that it talks about the current and future generation. But which generation and who are these people when the bill is clearly not, it talks about them from the preamble. The body of the bill does not make any reference whatsoever to what it says. Further going on, recognizing further the need for the national regulatory framework to coordinate the preservation and development of agricultural land in a productive manner to prevent the fragmentation of agricultural land, to minimize the loss of agricultural land, to provide, to promote viable farming units, to encourage the optimal use of agricultural land and to provide for food security. To date as we speak, we are dark as we are, not because we work in the sun. It is because we eat poison, we eat genetically modified foods. What has happened to our organic seed? You know, with respect to yourself, comrades, the reason you draw and a Ronarikarri polishite like this, it is because of these poisons that we eat. I ask myself, why is food security, what is food security actually? What does it take to achieve? When everywhere food, chicken and everything are dumped on us? At some time in our land here in South Africa, we, during the time of ninety-seven, what saw going to two thousand and twelve, we had every power to change the laws of our land to make sure that we cater for the previously disadvantaged, in particular our people, black people. in particular, our people, black people. Fast forward to half a decade ago, the freedom fighters here, the comrades of Atorino, let us change this expropriation of land without compensation and do it smart so that we avoid this ticking time bomb, comrades, which is that the, 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 the haves and the have-nots, the whites have land, we don't have land. We are for, there's a constant clash and conflict between us and them because of this issue of the land.
Your time, your time is up, that.
The last point is that beef master here, we had, we grow up in the farm. Beef master took our farm. They vandalized our graves mercilessly. We cannot talk to them because they have money and we don't have money. We have the records. Can you do something about it today?
Where our forefathers are laying there, eh, can you do something about it?
As a parting short, we have made a next year's of family A, niliboman, family B, niliboman, otoka feti ning, ning, stuff like that. And last point, as a chamber of commerce and industry, I have not been able to cater for all this due to respect that Madame Chair has given us. We asked that ritlemo, parlamentemo, and sit with you and talk this thing and solve it once and for all. We want to come to parliament, not this paper. Now they are feeling us, requests everywhere. Please tell us when can we do so? We will come at our own cost. Kialiboha, we love you very much.
The next speaker, please. Please mention name and surname, which forum, which stakeholder are you representing?
I'm from Diakwane, in, eh, small village Diakwane, in Dr. Ruth Mombati district. And also if we are allocated a farm, does the government, or is the government supposed to give us a farm that does not have water, does not have any fencing? Another matter, we complain a lot about electricity. Eh, most of us in our area, we irrigate, eh, using electricity, but we have the challenge of low shedding. So we're pleading with the government to assist us in, eh, in terms of electricity. Thirdly, is a lack of information for our residents in Diakwane. We are led by CPA and most of the times when the, eh, government distributes vouchers, we do not know anything about those va, those vouchers as farmers.
Eh, the next thing, okabobo na moto, like koloi, yabatwa itu, lidichomi, but eh, perilie difuru, iperilie voucher yone, epuso yin siti.
Eh, because at times you see two people who are friends, they have a, a, a bucket that is loaded with feed and the vouchers that come from the government.
Government, if you have a license to give voucher, you're ready to discount it, ho, there may be a card, anyana, zadi discount it.
And we are also asking the government to help us, even though they don't give us, um, eh, the, um, the, the vouchers. Maybe they can give us, eh, they can give us discount cards so that when you go purchase feed and so on in, in those areas, they can give, they can discount it for us. Eh, I, I see that the bill emphasizes or focuses more on science, but it does not indeed, eh, mention anything about technology. So I was asking, can that be also included, more so like example, if you can have CCTV cameras in our farms so that we can curb crime? Thank you. I would like to greet the leadership and everyone who has attended this hearing.
My name is Motsovunrebelimpet.
I'm from Bamusa municipality.
The deputy chairperson of yard, elon chitwe, I think close to three or two weeks back.
Eh, I'm a cha, I'm a deputy chairperson of yard, which was launched two or three years back.
No, three, I'm talking about weeks.
Or three weeks back.
Yeah. No, I'm not being funny, like yet.
Slow down, slow down a bit because you are speaking very fast and the interpreter cannot hear you properly.
Okay, I was saying, the deputy chairperson of yard. In low chitwe three, two, two, two weeks back. Eh, if we, let's say, it's a youth in agriculture and development.
If you don't know this, a yard is youth in agriculture and rural development.
Eh, Billy eh, eh, highlight the preservation and development of land, so agricultural land. Okay, regarding that, I will say, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the bill. The reason why I'm saying I'm I don't support the bill because I don't see the use of it in my, in my location. My reason is because the land that we currently have in Ispalakomu for farming but doesn't have a perimeter fencing, running bore holes and also Apollo for lighting the area to af, to avoid theft and vandalism. Because on our side, the, the people that are currently busy, like, working on that site, like, most of them, they can't be able to produce, produce anything because of theft and vandalism. So we would like the department to be able to help us with the perimeter fencing because, like, right now, I'm one of the people who's working that side, who managed, like, to fence my own area. So I would like the department to be able to help us with a, with a, with a perimeter fencing. Yeah, and another thing, also what I would like to, like, the municipality, it must come to us, which areas are available for agricultural use because currently we don't know them. But all what we hear is like, most of, there's a guy that came here and talked about the forum. Those are the people mostly who, like, regarding, like, maybe benefits from their forums. So we would like the department to be able to help the yard. Eh, the third thing, I would just like to say, your, eh, S Yard, we will list changes that we love to see regarding the bill and submit them. The fourth thing, the bill states the preservation and development of land, but as far as funding and development is concerned, the bill does not protect nor or include the youth, so I would like also the bill also to include the youth. Thank you.
I first want to greet our paramount chief. And greet his nation.
Before kidumelisa, definitely happily. Eh, Mr. Dumotami. Eh, what is happening here is total disrespect. I'm a secretary, I'm Tatum Mambani, secretary of Contralesa in this region. That is total disrespect of our chief things. That, an, an official from government must introduce yourselves here in our hometown and in a communal land. Can you please wait a minute, sir? Eh, 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 I'm, 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 I'm disturbed by that. And I am asking myself that when we leave here, who's going to tell you guys, the dogs are still tightened up, you can leave my yard? Who's going to settle, tell you that? I'm continuing. As the chief is sitting here.
Can you hold on a sec, Bodhwa? Can you hold on a sec? I understand, actually, we're all here, understand what you are raising and the concern. But, there is a proper way. What you just did, this is a translator, most of us here, including myself. Because you are mixing when you were speaking English and Soto, so we get lost along the way. So he is translating to us. I understand your uvarang and understandably so. But can you also allow us to go with you on what you are saying? Thank you.
Eh, eh, that is, okay, sorry, my brother. Eh, let me, let me start. Eh, you know, as I was saying, and let me greet you there. Eh, there's, the government agreed with Contralesa and our chief things that we will work like hand in glove. Eh, but at the center stage of that, I'm, I'm foreseeing problems already. Because the person who should be dealing with the communal land and protection of that is the number one chief of town. One must also remember that, eh, when, when you come into any village, cultural, before I continue, because I'm, 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 you must bear with me, you're going to give me my minutes. Eh, when you come to a, to a house, you meet the first, first person you meet is the father of the house. Okay, fast forward, the land that we are talking of is the, is a tribal land. Fast forwarding from the problem and the pain that I have of the ill treatment of my king or of my paramount chief, that, eh, when I say it's a tribal land, I mean one, we have a majority of black people in particular sitting now in this very premises. Number two, you will, you will get in, number two, we are having a community of white community people, not here. And we are having white people in this region. Okay, this bill does not seek to protect or redress the issues that we faced as a country during, before nineteen ninety-four. But, but it seeks to advance the hidden agenda of the white community in the agricultural sector. A latter speaker has just spoken now that the, eh, eh, the, the stakeholders that were, were called, they were your SE, eh, SE, Agri-SE. You will find that Agri-SE is only ninety percent of communal, of, eh, eh, farming in South Africa. Now, the bill does not include the communal land. How, how so? You, you find that, eh, there is, there is land that is being taken by the, by the very same people, white people. All right, and the government also promotes this battle. Promotes the, the un-understanding of the black community to these processes. Why I'm saying that? Today we seem, today we seem as we are fighting against white people, but it is because of, we had an agreement during Kodessa one, Kodessa two and nineteen ninety-four, that we, we vote for us to be giving our land back. But to date, we have not, it does not materialize. Why I'm saying this? We have a lot of farmers, eh, fa, farming sectors, a year, forty hectares, that are not working. You know why? They've got their own, they owe money at Escom, they owe money at Val. Who, 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 who's the person who was doing everything? The, the white person who they, 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 they are under. After they leave, they leave us with a heavy score of one point nine million and our parents, they, they are the beneficiaries of apartheid. Now, can our government not promote the fight between us and white people by not taking what we agreed upon and taking time? This is, this is a Bible. This Bible, we have been reading Bibles for how many years? For how many years? Now I'm saying, when you go, when I, and, when I, when I went to Christian last time, I drove about thirty kilometers for, eh, eh, for Furtz Farm, up until the thirty kilometers for Furtz Farm. Now, what I'm trying to say, those guys, white people, they had to do what they had to do and take their land from the, the English, eh, the English and make sure that the Africaners support one another. But when it comes to us, instead of us coming and doing what is right, we write Bibles, where after writing Bibles, we don't take resolutions. Eh, we take resolutions, we don't act. Now, Mr. Dum, it's nice because of, you were once a trade unionist. I know you because I once was in a meeting with you in Johannesburg. Now, what I want, what, what I really want us to say is today, I am ashamed of what the minister is trying to achieve and trying to protect her or his interest. You know why I'm saying this? Last, my last word, you know why I'm saying this, eh, eh, Mr. Dum? It's because of one, one. Yeah, I know, but I'm talking English, they can hear. What, you know why I'm saying this? Sorry, all right, you know why I'm saying this? Even today, nah, even today, the chief, the paramount chief of town is not recognized. Up until we can learn to recognize one another as leaders, then we will go. Up until we can learn to recognize one another as leaders, then we will go further. I am disappointed on what has happened today. As the Secretary of Doctor RSM, I'm going to write the report to the Secretary of Contralessa in the province and I'm going to write to national. That Parliament does not respect the authority of our chief teams at any level. Yes, yes, Mr. Montwe, he's born and raised in Tawu. I'm surprised that he's sitting there, but his Parliament Chief is not there. Two, lastly, lastly, it is taking its course.
Can you mind your language, Boto?
That's why, that's why I was saying, my apologies. I'm saying, we are here to discuss on these issues that are affecting of. Food security is threatened. You know why? Because of our farms. There was a fence here, it is not second.
Your time is up, Boto. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mpen Pias. I first and humbly want to greet, to first greet our Parliament Chief, Kosi Mamkuruan. Even though when people come to your land, they do as they please. I'm a Contralessa member who is speaking here. And you know that Contralessa oversees about hundred twenty-seven chief teams in this area. Now, first and foremost, this little thing of yours called the bill, I do not support it at all because I thought that you are going to write something that is going to empower us to take our land back. I was coming here with great confidence that a certain white person's farm, I was going to take it. But now it seems like you just come here and making jokes with this bill that you come with. We know that this is just a talk show. We've long had such talk shows. The budget has been passed. This is another way just to utilize the budget. And now what are we going to agree upon? Because this bill only benefits the whites and the white farmers. Previous speakers have mentioned that, as you can see, that there's a lot of, it's only black people here. But now, why don't you give us our land, give the black people their land back? Now Chair, I want to ask you that the next time when you come here for a meeting, come and tell us that we are taking the land back. You are gonna take that farm, you take that farm and so on and so on. We're not gonna come here and have another talk show.
Your time is up, Tata. Unfortunately. Tata. Your time is up. Can you allow other speakers to speak, please? Can you allow another speaker to speak? You have consumed three minutes and thirty-nine seconds when you were standing there speaking. Can we allow other speakers to speak so that we conclude our business of the day? We thank you.
I first want to start by greeting our Parliament Chief and the chief teams. Members of parliament, you can see, according to the people that are here present, this bill has been passed. Because if there were no people available today, this bill would not be being passed. And I'm sure you, Chairperson, are happy with the attendance register. It shows that this meeting has went well. Now you parliamentarians came here so that we could pass this bill. But now you are here on behalf of the department. And now the core issues are with the department. So now you cannot answer to them. Because you only going to submit the matters that we've raised to the department. So the department was supposed to be here. The frustration that I've been hearing is with regard to land, that people have farms but do not have the resources. The resources are not available. I would suggest for the next time, if Lota Lota who passes any bill as parliament, maybe you can a belangka meeting, you can a belangka founding, you can a belangka meeting. Because of these things, you know, it's a long story. Now, I would suggest that next time when you come here, with another bill or with a bill, make sure that you bring the relevant expertise. For example, bring an expertise with water. Because, and also the one who's responsible with funding or who's responsible with water. Because as a farmer, it is useless to have a farm but you do not have water and you do not have farming and the municipality does not give you the land. And the other thing, these people, most of them, majority, they are still looking for funding. Now, as you can see in this hall, the majority are black people. And the problem is that it's with regard to funding. They do not have funding. For example, others have cattle, but they cannot afford feed or they don't have funding to buy feed. So you have a person who has cattle and cannot afford to buy maybe fourteen ton of chop to feed their cattle. Now, if we had someone responsible with funding, because the problem is that you have people who want to, funding, who's responsible for funding and water. Because you plant vegetables, but you need to water them. So now, if we can raise these issues to such a person present here. Now, my parting words, Chairperson, is that please teach the government employees, that those who work in the department, to have roadshows and campaigns whereby they would teach us, the farmers, about cattle breeding, teach us about farming and so on. And also, if there are provisions in the offices, that those provisions are not given only because you are a certain person or you are a friend of somebody, but it should be distributed equally.
Your time is up. Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. It's a privilege to speak before the great chief. For us as white communal farmers, commercial farmers. Okay, my name is Gideon Fonseal. I'm a Brahman breeder in the Ravelo area. I'm Chairperson of our Farmers Association in the Ravelo area as well as the Vice President of Agri Northwest. We as group of commercial and upcoming farmers want to put our support in the principles of this bill. We support the vision and the class, the class to classify zone preserve, develop the agricultural land for productive agricultural use for long-term and sustainable security. If I listen to most of my fellow farmers, which are most of these people, their livelihoods as well as mine is dependent on agriculture. That's why it is so important, especially for this community and for the whole area. We want land to be preserved for the future generations. We want them to be productive. We want them to help us with our livelihoods, to raise the whole community. I've listened to them and I've heard they're feeling excluded from the bill in terms of communal lands, in terms of other areas. And they think it's more a white privilege bill. And with that regards, I tend to stand behind them and says, let this bill be for all land, not for just a certain type of land, but for all land to develop agriculture. We as farmers and organized agriculture don't want this bill to be, to let agriculture be upheld before job creation in terms of mining and that. But the zoning must be done correctly so that if there is job opportunities in terms of mining in certain areas, that that job opportunities can come to lift the people out of poverty. We think special consideration should be given to the definitions in the clause of the bill, which was noted by Agri-SE and Agbus in their submissions. We feel that is crucial for the definitions and the clauses to be held correctly so that they can be managed on lower levels as well. We also feel that these procedures must not change and to be permitted for unconstitutional violations of our rights as well as the people that living on the land's rights. It is a privilege to have your time and to have this audience. Thank you.
Let me first, by first greet those who have gathered here in our meeting. And first state that, Chairperson, I'm not happy you are biased.
And Dumo, he know about this?
You do not enter a royal land without first going to the chief teams. I see that there was a lack of communication, but let it not happen again the next time. A lot of people who spoke here, we realized that they're not residents of Tawu, but they come from Lake Wataymani and so on. But it doesn't mean that they shouldn't raise their issues when they are here present. Now, I am from the Royal House and I'm the uncle of the Royal House. I'm preparing a way for the chief to come and address you. So we as the Royal House, we do not have a problem with the bill. But where are our land claims? We claimed, but we have not received a response from you. you indicating to us, here is your land claim, and here is where it is, it is at the moment. And I would like to advise the Parliament, that at the time Mr. Mquinta was the Minister, he did come to the Northern Cape, and he did indicate and mention that 350, and, or 300, two farms, yes, it is for the Batlapin tribe. Until today, we are still waiting for that handover to occur. Now, another thing that I, I want the Parliament to, to recognize, is relating to CPA. We're talking about two things. There is tribal land, and then there is urban land.
This is a tribal land.
So, I will, no, 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 not speak a lot about it, but on behalf of the chief, I will ask the chief to forgive you. And this, this, or what just happened, should never happen again. Chief Khalishewa was present before Mr. Mandela. Our grandfather. So, Mr. Dumo, me, Mr. Zdumo, and Mrs. Chet, let this not happen again, please. Um, Chairperson, the Honorable Chief was asking if you could stand here, so that you could face his nation. from the Parliament. I want to indicate with regards to our guests, from Lake Wataymani, and up to Freiberg, they are our, they, they, they are, we are family, because they, they still part of us. So, since I've greeted everyone, but I would like to make this plea to the Parliament. Now, since the ladies and gentlemen have spoken, have, have alluded, when a guest arrives in the tribal land, in the royal land, they must go first to the, to your Royal House, and knock their first. Please, the next time, let us do it thus, this way. Another thing that I'd like to mention to the Parliament, it's relating to the water regulation. It should be amended, so that people can have access to water. I would like to especially mention the farmers in our area, because sometimes they do pay for the water, but they, they do not utilize it. Now, I would like the, the Parliament to make arrangements, whether it could be in Cape Town, or it could be in Plutoria, that we have an engagement with Falharts, so that we could show you specifically the port, the loopholes, so not the portals, the loopholes that are, that, that are, that are in the regulations. Because the water regulation and this bill coincide. Now, truly speaking, I have gone through this bill. Now, from the, from the Royal House, we accept this bill, we approve, we, we go, we go with it. It is only, it only needs to be fixed here and there. We will find that the case, it takes five years to resolve it, ten years in a, in a high court, a magistrate court. Now, that thing, it, it delays, it causes problems in our area. that have been gone, that have gone to court, but yet they're not resolved. Some of the cases, they take way long, they can take five to 10 years before it's been resolved. Now, I would like that there should be an inclusion in this bill, that a judge or a magistrate must have a certain timeframe, maybe six weeks or six months, to conclude a case. Because the problem is that whilst this case is still ongoing for many years, it creates a problem for another person who's going to bring a case to the court, and it is just, it's a vicious cycle. But, but now, if there is a timeframe, a stringent timeframe, that could curb the problem of having court cases that take longer before they can, they can be resolved. Then, we don't want to see ourselves, the community, raho, retapuso, yano, reisa ko, ko, ko. We have submitted the documents, it in, go land claims commission, but it, it, it really, just imagine from 1990 until now, it's not a new application, or a new claim. We also feel that this procedures must not change, and to be permitted for unconstitutional violations of our rights, as well as the people that living on the land's rights. It is a privilege to, to have your time, and to have this audience. Thank you. Let me first, by, first greet those who have gathered here in our meeting, and first state that, Chairperson, I'm not happy you are biased. And Zdumo, he know about this? You do not enter a royal land without first going to the chief's hands. Now, I, I am from the Royal House, and I'm, I'm the uncle of, of the Royal House. I'm preparing a way for the chief to come and address you. So we, as the Royal House, we do not have a problem with the bill. But where are our land claims? We claimed, but we have not received a response from you indicating to us, here is your land claim, and here is where it is, it is at the moment. And I would like to advise the Parliament, that at the time Mr. Mquinta was the Minister, he did come to the Northern Cape, and he did indicate and mention that 350, and, or 300, two farms, yes, it is for the Batlapin tribe. Until today, we are still waiting for that handover to occur. Now, another thing that I want the Parliament to, to recognize, is that we have come here to present the bill, and, but now, I'm sure you've realized that a lot of people have concerns and complaints. So now, what I would suggest to you as parliamentarians, is that have a program, wherever you come, and to listen only to, to the complaints and problems that the people are facing. Not, don't, don't just come with a bill, but have a certain time period whereby you come and listen to the grievances that the people are experiencing. Now, another thing that is of great concern to me, it is that there should be an amendment to the laws relating to import and export. The reason being that our small-scale farmers, they cannot access that, that space. Truly speaking, and it's not a secret, it is only the commercial farmers, the big farmers, who have access to that market. We're talking about beef master and so on. So now, in that law, it should be amended, so that there should be a committee, or there should be an institution that can help our small-scale farmers to partner with the, with the big guns, so that when they sell, or when they export their products, they can also have a share of the cake by exporting their products as, along with, with the ones who are already in the market. And by, and so, so, so that they could also have a chance to access, to access.
And the children that go to those colleges are our children, they are Batlapin. But they should be, they should be given opportunities eh, whereby they could use the skills that they've, that, that, that they've been given and, and, and utilize it in, in their, in their expertise.
Eh, baholo baka, eh, molau ohayo barre, ro, ro palam kibili, molau kakanya. Eh, kinke kopa ya na, hore, eh, ke kope parlamenti, hore, lutuli eh, kanti ba thoba, bana li dilelo. Bana li dilelo. Ke kopa parlamenti, hore, enelele nanewo in future. La hotla, hore, etza dilotza ba thu. Isifela hotla, ho kadipili. Unne, kore parlamentetla na ibite premi, emisi. Lutli, lutli hukua dilotza, za, za ba.
Now, eh, yes, government, eh, parliament, you have come here eh, to present the bill. And, but now, I'm sure you've realized that a lot of people have concerns and complaints. So now, what I would suggest eh, to you as parliamentarians is that have a program wherever you come and to listen only eh, to, to the complaints and problems that the people are facing. Not, don't, don't just come with a bill, but have a certain time period whereby you come and, and listen to the grievances that the people are experiencing.
Eh, weki, ehwe ya, kore, khonali melao eminti eh, twaniting ho chenchiwala. Like, in two year, dijote diyambu over, import and export of the food. Then, kanyewo, kore ba, balimi potlana ba rona, haba, haba ifithele, haba ifithele. Kurhaba, ikarhaba akaridui moa. Hu akar, ritwanziribu, hu akaridua, baba khonangia kabu beef master yalo le yalo. Yano, kopa, hore, hore ba tushu ele bone, abadirelue pakignyana hun. Ba patahamwe, le bu beef master, hore. Eh, reba, hore, kise za china nama. Ba le bone ba akaridui wehore, at least banne le komidiore in elo ne regizeza china nama.
Now, another thing eh, that, that, that is of great concern to me. It is that eh, there should be an amendment to the laws relating to import and export. Eh, the reason being that our small-scale farmers, they cannot access that, that, that space. Eh, truly speaking, we, and it's not a secret, it is only the commercial farmers, the big farmers, who have access to that market. We talking about beef master and so on. So now, in that law, eh, eh, it should be amended so that there should be a committee or there should be a, an institution that can help our small-scale farmers to partner with the, with the big guns. So that when they sell eh, or when they export their products, they can also have a share of the cake by exporting their, their products eh, along with, with, with the ones who are already in the market. And by, and so, so, so that they could also have a chance to access, eh, to access that, that, that space.
Boneba ba baholo bao, ba rekha monhoro na eh, ba hubei potlana, ba taya, ba isa eh, china kuwa.
Now.
Yes.
Okay, now, this. Now, these big commercial farmers eh, they buy from these small-scale farmers. They buy the, the livestock from these small-scale farmers.
Price ekotlas.
With a very low price, and then they export with a higher price to China and so on.
Then, malo banyanela na haki le, kinke le ma khoho mu. Na ma, na ma nefela, kabato varana ba itzotsechele, na ma nefela eh, eh, wai zig, inele, hu akana inele nyat. Uthwa barre, five, ba itzaka five hundred, ki ba thu wa kamukotla.
I was saddened when I went to Mahoho one time and eh.
Go fantasy.
I- 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 in, in, in an auction, you know, eh, eh, a calf, they were selling it for five hundred rands. I wa, I was ghostmacked when, 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 when I heard that.
Yano, rekopa, hore, ritusiuwe ki melao. Le melawana, eh, di ruanyenwe ba, to protect ba thoba rona. Hore, at least ha mulimi, ayitiki le montenekta si, liene, at least akriye di kongo.
Now, we are asking and pleading that let the act and the clauses protect us so that the small-scale farmers, whatever little that they are selling, they can benefit greatly, greatly from it.
Eh, we, melao eh, twanikurukhonali melao eminti eh, twaniting eh, efetoule ba kolo. Khoneli, palo kanu kanu ka eh, bal, balimi baba potlana le baba kolo.
Now, there are many laws that needs to be amended, ladies and gentlemen. And eh, since there is a difference between eh, the small-scale farmers and the big commercial farmers.
Kore batla bona melao eh, jodisa balimi potla.
Now, we want to see the laws actually eh, um.
Eh, jodisa, yes.
Growing the small-scale farmers.
Sese lente mbaholo, khubwabu amar kitlele, baholo, ke baholo ba bom ba batona. Baba, bahodile, ke bone na akuhubwabu amar, kake batle hoya lolololo. High seba, ba twanite ba bone difitilo, yalo bakriye se monya na khubwabu amar.
Now, truly speaking, I did come with eh, with elderly ladies and gentlemen. And truly speaking, at this time, I, I'm sure that they are hungry and they should get something to eat. So I'm not going to go eh, eh, and speak for long.
But ke, ke hulebo heti eh, chehunzi yalo, hore, monja mora ho ke kosi. The kosi ki onia bo fe lo khubua. Ki solofela, hore eh, tota, kilebo kile, tata, hore eh, otuakole hati la ma, la ma hosi. Yano, ki solofena, hore, totle ditlata ma sentle eh, kanyea le hati ya, ya pili eno eh. Ki, ki agriculture, lele fati, ki dilotze dilimopilonya, ke kodi choka tona.
So, um, we, we, with that, eh, chairperson, eh, as eh, the, the proverb says eh, in se twana, that the last person to speak, it should be the king. So I'm very grateful for this opportunity, thank you so much. And eh, when, when it comes to the matters of agriculture, it is something that is very, very close to my heart. I grew up in, in, in an agricultural space.
Then, ke twalela na ke fiti sefela eh, eh, chehore. There was ke story, there was this story ya, ki mutu, ki, maridi rahe, kebe fele. Ki, ki mutu, wanme eh, anali, agriano, wa chuma, utuma, kuwa, utuma, ki mutu wanme. Then, khonali, re, onana, me, di re tuha, uha, hamochabela. Khubukotla yo, luakipta onuli, ataka, talilomo. Yano, abafe leza, are yo, walilomo yo, o romantic. Yo bechankadi reko yo ene, othle te buruwa. Kante kha itzhore, mototo ta kiyo, utlisa di jo mo kai. Kinke re, kama ka lo ba kolo, halo bua mo dimolu si relate, kiale mo kaka, bulaba taping.
Sorry, eh, whoa, can you hold on? As much as there's no one who speaks after the chief. Um, we have not yet concluded because akaka doliki, the interpreter, and yet, um, we have to properly close our meeting with the summary of our eh, eh, remarks and, and, and way forward. Can we just do that in a few minutes, please? Kalutulige, that, we want the story of a woman.
Le, le, le fa, monja mora ho le kosi, me ki kupilo, hore, ketle ketola ke story se, mora ho kosi abu. Eh, 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 this is a story, eh, it's a, it's a tale, but it might be based on a true story. So, there is this lady who has a fine gentleman. And then, eh, the, the, the gentleman, the love of, of her life, he gives a meat. Good meat, quality meat, all the time. But now, there's somebody who comes from Kate Town with a flower. And then this lady, all of a sudden, says that, no man, this man with a flower is romantic. And this one with the meat is very rural. Forgetting that actually, the one who brings the meat brings sustenance, brings food on the table. So, ba, 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 so, tho- those are my parting words to you, chairperson.
Thank you very much. Um, it's a, it's quite an interesting story, a closing story. Um, let me start with the last. We are asked not to use this door, this eh, exit, when we are exiting, to use the left one.
Eh, rekhetla ki sumula ka kanya bo fe lo eh, rekupua, hore, reska ra diisa, monja ko oli, okafamo je. Khonalemo rekupua, hore, rothi, retzwa ka monja ko o, okafamo leme.
But before we use any exit doors.
Me, 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 pele rekatswa ka khoroi pe fe la.
Allow me to take this opportunity to thank everybody that has came and contributed to this public hearings and submitted their inputs, written and orally. We thank you so much.
Ke kopa, hore, lempentono, ina, hore, ketle, kilo lebo heti tata eh, baba kile mo kopono, ina se chaba. Le lwanaba, yelo, hore, le ra kisa di twa ilotza lona. Ekatswa yelo, hore, le dubui lefa, no, kota lelo, kani lefa fati.
Also, I would like to clarify something.
Me kape, kinke kopa, hore, ketle, ketla lo sesi.
This is a parliament sitting.
Eno ke kotla ya, para, ke kopa ne ya parliamenti?
It's an off, eh, eh, it's an official seat of parliament as a commit, portfolio committee of agriculture, land reform and rural development.
Me, eh, ke kopa no, ya parliamenti, ya simuso, ya portfolio committee, ya demotuo eh, kaboloria le fati, le kaboloria miza se le kai.
I'm saying this because as we were seated here, there are certain things that we would love to do, but because it's a official parliament sitting, we are bound to comply with the rules and regulations of our cities in parliament.
Ke, ki bua ya na, ka hona, khonali dilodi, we, te nerele za tata kodi dira. Le fa konsejalo, eh, repatele diwa, hore, rico, bele melao, ni di taylo, etama, etza, etza parliamenti. Eh, rekha kopa no eno, e lo kopa no ya simuso ya parliamenti?
Um, we would like to take this opportunity on behalf of on behalf of the portfolio committee, we would humbly apologize. It is not our, it was not and still not our intention to offend or overlook or as a sign of disrespect to any kingdom or chiftency.
Me, mo we monja portfolio committee, kabhi kokobe zujobo kolo eh, ke kopa, hokopa ma itzwarelo. Inesema ikarelo arona, ibile, khasema ikarelo arona, ho, ho bisa, oh, oh, kota, koli bekheketi ra nyat, kota karitoki, bo hosi bo pe fe la.
Not only here, we are learning that maybe in future, in other places, we do things differently in this way. Before the settings, we, we might make sure, or we must make sure that the team that has been here two weeks before, they send a delegation to the traditional leaders to inform them that there will be a visit, properly inform them that there will be a visit from parliament. Don't be alarmed when you see them moving around, or you might also be part of the meeting. Maybe we should, we, we, we must eh, 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 use that route.
Me, khasefela, hore, rekopa ma itzwarelo, kape ritutile, ho zomotire khalon eno, hore, mona kwen etla. Eh, ho sa katereso, hore, ra, ka, eh, lefa ra koma filon ama wa kape. Eh, hore, eh, re romele ki medi ya, ya, ya rona, oh, baba rete lampe, lebeke tepe di, pele rona rete. Eh, hore, ba ku koka ta kontu nyabo hosi. Me, ba itisi ba bo hosi, hore, kuti lo khonale, kota kote, kaza silili rili. Me, eh, rekopa, hore, ni zo, hore, seosikile kudi reka, jana le jan.